I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 1st, 2019 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Mrs. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday.
Here.
Mumgarth.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Glover.
Here.
Jaworski.
Here.
Klug.
Here.
Stube.
Here.
Ingberg.
Here.
We've got scouts from PAC 463 with us. I'm going to invite them up to lead the pledge. Wherever they are. Oh, yeah. Ms. Myers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to remind the group, the Pancake Feed in open house is scheduled for Sunday, October 13th, from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the downtown fire station. Again, thanks to PVFD Inc. for hosting. Also, if you recall, we met, oh, gosh, that's probably been a month ago regarding a mission statement, tagline, and other messaging, and Kid Glove has gotten all the information they need in this discovery portion, so I would be expecting something back from them probably in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll schedule a time to get together as a council again and review that information and look at some finalization of some of that messaging. Also, we've talked about, Mayor Black and I and Amber have talked about a council retreat and strategic plan. So, we met with a representative from the Nebraska Business Development Center at UNO to talk about facilitating our council retreat and leading a strategic planning process. They initially wanted to schedule for two days, from 8:00 to 2:30. I know that's tough for everybody's schedule, so we're going to work to narrow that down to one day, and we're looking at sometime in January. So, I'll send you out some available dates after we meet with them for a follow-up meeting. And again, it'd be important if all of you can attend, so we'll really work hard to get a date that works for everybody. And then lastly, we've got some upcoming committee meetings. Annexation Ad hoc Committee meets on October 15th. And then we're scheduled to meet with council members four at a time on November 5th, one at 5:30 and one at 6:15, to present the street improvement plan and review the pavement condition index report. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Mr. Sunday, did you want to poll one?
C-5.
C-5 is polled. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Please vote on everything except C-5.
8A, 0Nays.
Motion passes. Next is item C-5, Resolution R. 190200. A resolution to approve the reappointment of Judy Emsweiler, formerly Judy Sunday, to the Planning Commission for a three-year term from September 2019 to September 2022. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 190200?
Motion by Councilman Mumgarth.
Second by Councilman Glover.
Mr. Sunday.
I believe I have a potential conference.
Okay.
Abstain.
And I believe our understanding of Robert's rule is abstentions do need voted upon. They don't need a secondary discussion, but we do need to vote, so please vote on the request to abstain. And you can vote on that, on the request to abstain.
8A, 0Nays.
The abstention is approved. We have a motion and a second on the original resolution. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on Resolution R. 190200.
7A, 0Nays, one abstention by Sunday.
Motion passes. Next is item D-1, Ordinance 1856, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R-4 multifamily residential for the property legally described as attractive land being part of Tax Lot 4, a tax lot located in the northwest quarter of Section 5, Township 13 North, range 12 East of the 6 p.m., Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of South 114th Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Felker Family Farms LLC. Is there a council member that will introduce?
Introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. Item D-2, Ordinance 1857, an ordinance to amend the city of Papillion Ward boundaries to incorporate SID #143 Eagle Ridge, SID #179 Eagle Crest, SID 184 Eagle Hills, SID 209 River Chase, and SID 213 Walnut Creek Estates, as well as two areas zoned mixed use and light industrial in the southwest portion of city limits as annexed by Ordinance 1841. Is there a council member that will introduce?
Introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Klug. Item E-2, Ordinance 1853, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R-3 Urban Family Residential for the property legally described as attractive land located in the east half of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 2, Township 13 North, range 12 East, excluding the right-of-way, generally located on the northeast corner of South 80th and Cape Art Road. The applicant is Shadow Lake 2 LLC. This is a public hearing. Now, open it. Do we have any proponents? If you'd state your name for the record.
Good evening. Pat Hillier, 14710 West Dodge Road, representing the applicant. This is the Phase 2 of Shadow Lake 2, just west of it. It's the former church land. I'm here for any more questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F-1, the applicant themselves have requested that that be withdrawn from the agenda, so we're not going to take any comment or take any action on that. Item F-2, Resolution R. 190163, this is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the east half of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter, Section 2, Township 13 North, range 12 East, excluding the right-of-way, generally located northeast corner of South 80th Street and Cape Art Road. The applicant, Shadow Lake 2 LLC. It's a public hearing. I'll acknowledge that the applicant's still here. Anything else to share? Again, any other proponents? Opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R. 190163?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0Nays.
Motion passes. Item F-3, Resolution R. 190192, a resolution to approve David E. Doolin as the corporate manager for American Legion Harry Bossard Doing Businesses, American Legion Post 32, for their Class C liquor license. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 190192?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second by Councilman Jaworski.
Do we have any proponents? I will note for the record, the applicants here don't have to come up, but if you want to, and maybe, you want to share a little bit about what you're doing? Time for a little commercial for the Legion.
Yeah.
And if you'd state your name for the record.
My name is David E. Doolin. I'm the past commander over there. I'm District 8 commander now, and I want to thank everyone very much. I really appreciate that, and we won't let you down. Come on down for dinner. Glad to have you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have anybody opposing, any opponents? Do we have any council discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0Nays.
Motion passes. Item F-4, Resolution R. 190197, a resolution to approve a special fireworks display permit for Oshima Meadow at 811 Western Hills Drive on October 26, 2019, in observance of Dewali. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 190197?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second by Councilman Klug.
Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Councilman Mumgarth.
This is a little bit off the kilter. I'm in favor of this. I've been struck by, this is about the fourth or fifth time we've done this special permit. They have a party. It goes off well. The neighbors don't complain. Bob doesn't complain in particular. One of the neighbors. You know, it's one of those things, I look at it and say, well, good for them. Everybody has a good time. Fireworks go off, and we don't get complaints about fireworks. Can you imagine that? And I'll go fireworks question. Okay, for our general July 4th fireworks season, what's the timeline for the applications?
I believe we start collecting those in December, and they will be on the first council agenda in February for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I plan on approving this, and he lives on essentially the same street that I do, and I've never received a complaint from anybody, so there's no question I'm going to vote yes on this.
Thank you. And I don't think there's ever been a complaint in the City Hall with it in the times we've been doing it. No other council discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0Nays.
Motion passes. Item F-5, Resolution R. 190198, a resolution to accept the conveyance of attractive land within South 96th Street, generally located between Portal Road and the West Papillion Creek from Sarpy County, and to authorize a dedication of street right-of-way for the same as South 96th Street. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 190198?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Sunday. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0Nays.
Motion passes. Related item, F-6, Resolution R. 190199, a resolution to accept the conveyance of attractive land within Portal Road, generally located between South 96th and Giles Road from Sarpy County, and to authorize a dedication, street right-of-way of the same as Portal Road. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 190199? Motion by Councilman Sunday.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0Nays.
Motion passes. F-7, Ordinance 1852, an ordinance to amend Chapter 205 zoning ordinance, Article 36, having to do with off-street parking. The applicant is the city of Papillion, Off-Street Parking Regulations Ordinance Amendment. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1852?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Is there any council discussion? Please vote.
8A, 0Nays.
It's all the regular agenda items. Committee reports, F and A committee met. Any report out from there?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Excuse me. We had several items on our plate tonight, and I'll run through them as quickly as possible. There is an update for the committee and some discussion regarding the financing of Papillion Landing Community Center. Because of good management by the staff, the city, and the council, and the good relationship and the work that Sampson has done, we may find ourselves in a position where we'll know probably by December if we will have some additional funds remaining to do a couple of items that we initially weren't planning on doing in this cycle, such as soccer and the softball complex, without spending any money in excess of what we had budgeted. So, that's good news, and we'll know more about that later, and the staff will come back, give us an update when we get to that realization, because there's still a little bit more to complete with the community center. We want to get that done first. The second item was discussion about the Ricky Field Press Box. As many of you may know, the one that's there now was built in the early '60s, 1962, '64, something like that, '64. And this project's been near and dear to Kellsford Glover. It's to replace the current press box facility and restrooms and concessions, because it's very outdated, and it's not physically intact as we would want it to be. And we have a state Legion tournament there and so forth, and we're also going to plan on using those restrooms to help with Veterans Park next door as well. Bids were received, and the committee recommended the staff to place it on as soon as possible council agenda to accept the low bid, which came in a little more than we planned on. However, we also instructed, after some discussion, the staff to, in the resolution for us to vote on, to accept the low bid and to also make some allowances for moving some money that we have available for this project into that to fund it, because it really critically needs to get done. And hopefully, we're still going to try to get it done before the state tournament in the spring, but it's going to be a difficult process. So, that was the other item. I should back up, too, with the Papillion Landing Community Center. We also had some discussion about, as you all know, we have a wellness program for our employees, and with the availability of Papillion Landing, there's so much more they could do there, our employees, to maintain their health, which not only benefits them, it benefits the community they serve. It helps with people being unable to work because of illness or injury, because they tend to be healthier. And also, it will, over time, I think, help insurance rates as well. So, we discussed perhaps giving, moving the funding that we have now, simply moving it into using it for a discount rate somewhat for the employees and the full-time, part-time employees we added tonight as well. And it will cost the city any additional money. We'll track it the first year to see how it works, and hopefully, we'll have a heck of a good benefit for the employees and the community they serve, simply by moving the same amount of money over than we budgeted. Lastly, we discussed a proposed development. I won't go into a lot of detail, because it's still in negotiation phase, but, you know, we've had some discussion about a development out near the Warner Park ballpark. And we asked and gave direction only to the staff to continue negotiating as appropriate, to come to some understanding about funding and process and other items, and bring it back to the F and A committee, and basically to forward it to the council. So, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I don't think any other committees have met. Do we have any comments from the floor? We've got a number of students here. You guys get to come up and introduce yourself, and we're just going to wait, so stand up and come on up. Introduce yourself and what brings you here.
Hi, I'm Grace Charlesworth. I go to Papillion La Vista South, and I'm here for an applied learning project for Mr. Keller's AP Government class.
Hi, I'm Katie Cruz. I also go to Papillion La Vista South, and I'm here to work on my applied learning project for Mr. Wax.
Hi, I'm Audrey Legere. I go to Papillion La Vista South, and I'm here for Mr. Keller's Applied Learning Project.
Hi, I'm Madeline Backus. I also go to Papillion La Vista South, and I'm also here for Mr. Keller's Applied Learning Project.
My name's Grace Castle, also here from Papillion La Vista South, also here for Mr. Keller's Applied Learning Project.
My name's Elizabeth Grote, and I'm also from Papillion La Vista South, and I'm also here for Mr. Keller's Applied Learning Project.
We've got a couple in the back row on that side. And a young man scooting down in the chair.
Hi, I'm Kim Burning. I'm from Creighton, and I am here for a business law class.
Wonderful.
Hi, I'm Melissa Bealitz. I also go to Creighton, and I'm here for a business class as well.
Welcome. Thank you for coming out. One more.
My name is Amos, and I go to Carriage Hill, and I'm in 4th grade.
Thank you for coming out. Council comments? Yes?
Barely was even when I was one.
Are you teachable?
That's debatable. Have to ask my wife that. Eric Taylor from the Papillion Times, I just want to take a minute, let everybody know that I'm going to be leaving the Times in a couple of weeks for a new opportunity, but I wanted to take this moment to thank everyone here, from the mayor to council to staff. Probably everyone sitting here has received a phone call from me at some point, bugging you with questions and whatever. Some of you, multiple phone calls probably, Jeff and Chief, and Chief and Tony Laurie. I just want to say thank you for being as cooperative as you have. When I jumped over, I used to do sports for years, came over into city government, I didn't know much, and everyone has been very cooperative and patient with me during that time, and I just wanted to say thank you. We're only as successful on our end as we are the people we're dealing with, and you've all been very patient and very informative with me, so I just want to take this time to say thanks to all of you for that.
And thank you. Press and the news gets a lot of press these days.
Yeah, not all good.
Not all good, and some of that's about the journalist. I will stand up publicly and say the staff at the Papillion Times are true journalists. You guys really take time to learn what we're doing, get educated on issues, present a fair context whether we like it or not. You've always been fair, and I think that is a very important thing about local newspaper, the Papillion Times specifically. I think it's something that a lot of people don't appreciate, so a little bit of a commercial for Papillion Times, subscribe to it and support it.
There you go.
It's a great public service, so thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Best. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, so, Mr. Ingberg to my right, my colleague, made some comments relative to the committee meeting tonight, and kind of piqued my interest when he talked about cost savings, so I just kind of question as from the standpoint, is that what kind of dollars amount are we looking at as far as cost savings if it comes to fruition? When could we anticipate those ball fields coming online?
Ms. Myers.
How would that be handled?
Well, never mind. I'll let Chris answer, but primarily, if you recall, we had a grant received for $750,000, and we received half of that when we started the project, basically. Some of that went towards the library portion of it. We get the second half of that grant money once we receive a certificate of occupancy. But the other stuff comes from contingencies we've never had to use because of management of it and cooperation with Sampson and the staff and everybody. But as far as speaking to the dollar mouths, I can quote a number, but I'd rather have Chris quote the number.
Well, again, if you recall, when you approved the GMP a number of months ago, there would have been a 5% contingency for Sampson and a 5% contingency for the city of Papillion. So, again, to reiterate Councilmember Ingberg's comments, we haven't used a lot of that, so we're looking at nearly $6 million that would allow us to consider moving forward with the softball complex. And then additionally, I would just add as part of the F and A comments, I know there are four council members that weren't part of the F and A committee, and I'll schedule a time to meet with you as well and give you a briefing on the proposed development.
I guess one of the other questions I would have relative to if we move forward with the complex, would that be something that would be done by our current contractor, or is it something that you would look at putting out for bids? And so, we would be looking at 2020, 2021, or what's the anticipated date?
The intent would be to come back to you and ask for a change order to the current GMP so that we could move forward quickly. Again, they would like to start putting some additional soil on the ground for stockpiling, et cetera, to get it ready to go in the spring. So, we're hoping to come back to you in December to ask for that approval.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
I just want to point out to anybody who might be watching on TV, because I know there's millions of people that do. We introduced an ordinance tonight for council ward redistricting. This begins a process that has been mandated to us by the state of Nebraska after quite a lot of discussion at our legislative session last year. It became very controversial. It, in fact, is a process we've used many times in the past, but it was nice of the state to step in and tell us how to do this, because, you know, if you're elected to a state office, you automatically know more than anybody at a local office. But, so, we're starting the process. I, for one, and I think everybody else ought to be interested, in seeing what happens hereafter. How many people are interested in the ward redistricting? Historically, not many people have been, but we will see. We will see if the state's concerns were borne out or not. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody listening out there, watching on TV, knows that when we introduce this ordinance, it's real quick, nothing is said. I just want to make sure everyone understands that's what's happening.
Mr. Jaworski.
Two things. I wasn't going to comment on that, but I am now, but that was a whopping three last time. But anyway, let's get back to what's important. I think Sampson got us here. Sampson done a great job. I think we just moved that as forward and as fast as we can, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Before I give my updates, I'm going to ask Ms. Myers to introduce somebody who a lot of people may not recognize. We mentioned we had a new Assistant City Attorney, and we gave the name, but a lot of people may not know her, and she is sitting up here, so you want to introduce?
Absolutely. Again, Carla Heather Shaw Risco is with us tonight. That's always a mouthful, but hopefully, I've got everything right here, and I think Carla was with us at the last council meeting as well, so, but Ellen, our city attorney, is on vacation. I think Carla's been here, is this your third week?
This is my third week.
And we're keeping her very busy, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Since she's an attorney, she probably used to be put on the spot. Do you want to take a few minutes and just maybe introduce yourself and get a little bit of background?
There we go. My name's Carla Heather Shaw Risco. I came from the state of Nebraska. I'd worked for the Department of Health and Human Services for the last about 11 years. I was in private practice with Fitzgerald Shore, Bartlett &amp; Brennan prior to that for about 10 years, and worked for the city of La Vista when I was at Fitzgerald Shore. I'm married. I have two high school-aged kids, so I think it's really fun to see the kids that are coming for their classes at school and at college. I'm also a Creighton grad, so I could go in for the Creighton kids. So, and I'm really, I've been here for three weeks now, this is my third week. Came for a week, and then Ellen left to go on vacation, so I was kind of like sink-or-swim, and hopefully, I'm swimming, at least treading water now, so, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. We did have the, the League of Nebraska Municipalities had its annual conference. Ms. Myers and I went down and presented, and Mr. Mumgarth and Ms. Powers were there. We actually had about a three-hour session. It was a panel discussion with, I think, four other cities, and just talking about how we're utilizing some state programs for local economic development. So, we, everything we've been doing, we tried to, if we used a state program, we just explained what that was, and then had a little bit of a Q and A. We also had a Sarpy County Economic Development Board meeting, and the Wastewater Agency had a board meeting. Significant vote was taken. We've talked about the OPBD pilot fees, the In-Lua fees, using those for, help fund the gap for south of the ridgeline. The agency did approve an agreement. That agreement will become before all of the city councils and the county board for ratification, so you'll be getting an overview of that. I would say as you read that document, if you have any questions on what's in there, how it's calculated, any issues or concerns, reach out to either Ms. Myers, Ms. Powers, or myself. I think it'll probably be the next council meeting that will be on the agenda for ratifications. We want to make sure you understand what's in there. So, if you've got any questions when you see that, reach out to us, and we can walk through that. Met tonight with the Cub Scout PAC 463. They had a number of requirements, so spent some time with them. Just a couple of calendar items. We've been talking about Project Wizard. We still can't say the name, but they are having a groundbreaking Friday at 10:00 a.m., so if you want to attend that and you have not RSVP'd, let Kendra know. She can get you on the RSVP list, and then we would finally be disclosed who Project Wizard is. October 8th is the Chamber Annual Awards Dinner. Again, if you want to go to that, let her know. The next day, on the 9th, is the MAPPA Council of Officials Annual Meeting. I know some have gone to that in the past. Again, if you want to go, let Kendra know. Ms. Myers mentioned on the 13th is the Fire Department's Open House at the Pancake Feed, and then on October 19th is the School Foundation's Annual Gala. So, again, if you want to go to that, let Kendra know. Any other council comments? Mr. Jaworski.
Real quick on that agreement, can we get that before the council packets, so if we do have a lot of questions, we don't bombard them?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
You bet. Ms. Clu.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I didn't jump in earlier. I just wanted to give a special thank you to the police department and a couple of the people in the ambulance and fire department. Papillion La Vista South's marching band hosted a great big competition this last Saturday. And I know many of the people on those two teams came through multiple times, looking and seeing what was going on. You know, when you have 1,700 students in one location, there's always a possibility. Absolutely nothing went wrong, but the rain. And even in the torrential downpour, I know we had at least one officer driving the parking lots with us, making sure everyone was safe. So, thank you to both teams for making sure all those students were being looked after and watched out for.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Please vote.
8A, 0Nays.
We are adjourned.